Very good. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of July 11th, 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Steve, we have on the screen for the folks at home tonight's agenda. If you would be kind enough to focus on that for just a little bit. For those of you in the audience who have a few copies of tonight's agenda as well, if you would like to have a paper copy. Okay, very good. We begin tonight's meeting, as we do all first meetings of the month, with the supervisor's statement. This is a financial report of the current condition of the town. And I will pull that up on the screen for you, for the folks who are joining us, the students. What we try to do here in our local Red Hook government is try and show as much as possible to the folks in the audience and also at home, all the actions that we're considering taking in an evening and also update them as to the finances of the township. And so there's a monthly report by the supervisor that sort of updates many of our accounts. It is essentially these first two pages. And what I generally report on is the balances for the town as a whole. And this is for the monthly period ending June 30th, 2017. We begin the month with an opening balance of $6,064,577, receipts of $166,403, dispersments of $381,322, leaving us a balance of $5,849,658. And for those of you students in the audience, we collect property taxes to help fund these services. And that generally is done at one point in time in the year, that's in the springtime. So you will see during the course of the month after the springtime, where the money we take in is less than the money going out. It all sort of comes in kind of at once, essentially. So I hope that's helpful for you to try and understand some of what we do here. Okay, we, at this point, would entertain a motion if there are no questions about the supervisor's report. And Harry, I know you like to focus on the community preservation fund balance of $810,000 on the first page.
Yeah, didn't have much activity this month, but it's the late of.
Well, that was last month. I can tell you, I received the check for this month, and that's going to be an additional $31,000. So that's good news there. We have, one of our funding sources is a real estate transfer fee called a community preservation fund. And it's to help protect a lot of the resources that we have here in town, protect our community character. We use these funds to protect farms, to protect critical water resources, historic properties. Can be used for recreation trails, that kind of thing. And that was the one fund that I was referencing just now. So back to, any questions about the supervisor's report? Hearing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve it. All right, thank you very much. All in favor? We have just a very few budget adjustments as well. From Ann Conway. All right, any questions there? If not, a motion to approve the budget adjustments?
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And it's time for our town clerks. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's time for our town clerk's report. Sue McCann?
This is town clerk, monthly report for June 2017. Amount remitted to New York ag and markets for the spade annuity program, $60. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $112.50. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $377.90. And the total local share remitted to supervisor as revenue, $1,507.44. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, town clerk, town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I just actually finalized the taxes. Everything came right out to the penny. And I just remitted the balance, which is penalties and interest to the supervisor. So we are squared away for this year.
Okay, very good.
Good job.
And Sue, if I could impose upon you, since we do have a lot of students in the audience tonight, if you could take a minute or two and just describe what the town clerk does on a daily basis? You do so many things.
Yeah.
Maybe if you could just list a few things that you do.
The basic thing is I'm the record keeper for the town of Red Hook. I take the minutes for the town board. I am the record officer, the record management officer. I sell all licensing permits. I do marriage licenses, death certificates, sell recycled stickers. I also collect water rents. We have a water department within our town. And I'm also the tax receiver for the town. So it's a very busy office. There's, you know, we try to be extremely helpful to the public. That's what we're here for. And if you ever need help, contact us, please.
Dogs and D E C. Dogs and D E C.
Dogs and D E C, well, that's all licensing information. Handicap parking, I mean, there's like a thousand things I could name.
She is an elected public official.
Yes. And so she's the face. She and her assistant Claire are the first office you see when you come in. And if you have questions, which other office you need to go to, you start with the town clerk's office. And generally speaking, most of your business will be conducted there. But she can certainly guide you to where you need to go if that's not the case. And we're very lucky to have Sue and Claire. So, all right. Very good. And we are going to, in just a few minutes, we are going to hear from all of you students as well. So this is the portion of the evening where we take public comments. Would anybody like to make some public comments now? Linda?
I'm back again. I was last here on 6/20, and I gave you 10 days for cease and desist for the illegal food truck business that is run by Jody Abak at Greg's Farm. This continues to be air pollution that goes towards our house. We have suffered health problems and we continue. I must remind you that when he started his business, he didn't have any permits. I called the Board of Health, and he was inspected four times. Each time, he had three violations, for a total of 12 violations. So not only is he illegal, because we don't have a food truck law in Red Hook, but he didn't have permits. And the public was in ill health regarding what he was doing, as well as what his smoker has done to us in our health. So, you made your decision. You didn't get rid of him on 6:30. That's it. You sealed your fate. I'm not talking to you. The next time we talk will be legal talk. That's the way it's got to be. Somebody's got to pay for our illness. And you all were involved in it by not getting rid of him. I've been here multiple times complaining, 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 and you've done nothing. I've worked for the town of Red Hook for 40 years, in committees and as an employee. And I'm still an employee. I work at home. So when I'm working at home, I get that pollution coming towards me. And you've done nothing. Nothing, nothing, nothing. So you'll pay.
Okay, thank you very much, Linda. Are there any other public comments? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next item in our agenda, and this is something we look forward to every year. Paul Marianthal, you're representing the Center for Civic Engagement. There's a wonderful program through the Department of State that's called the U.S. Institute for Student Leaders on Civic Engagement. Do I have that?
It's the study of the United States Institute.
States.
S U C.
Okay, there you go. So these students come to us from all over. In the case of this year, I think it's mostly the Middle East. And you're here to really study about what goes on here in the United States. Government-wise, you're going to visit local and national institutions as well. And we want to welcome you here and hope that if you have any questions about what we do, that you'll feel free to ask them tonight and also to drop by and to ask them in the future if not. So what we do, we have this practice, Paul, right? Where we would welcome, if you'd be kind enough to state your name and what you're studying and where you're from and anything else you would like to tell us. We'd be happy to hear.
Say something about your experience from being here. Say one thing about your experience.
Shall we start maybe... Oh, you want to start?
No, I wanted to start with.
Let's start, we'll go left to right, okay? Okay, very good. We'll start in this back left.
I'm Al Hassan from Iraq. I study medicine, general surgery. My impression would be that you guys have a system that deals with certain issues. And you probably get things done every, like every month, every week. And this is impressive, that in terms of you're actually reacting to the people. But what's interesting is that this case took so long and haven't been solved yet. And it's interesting to me that. I want to know why, why is it on hold?
And next?
I'm Mina from Kursari, Iraq. Actually, I don't have a specific comment. I'm here like to know everything about the American culture.
Okay, and you're studying?
Medicine.
Medicine, okay. And do you have a specialty you'd like to go into?
Not yet, but I'm thinking of psychology.
Psychology, very good.
Hi, my name is Willetta Hoot, and I'm from Gaza, Palestine. And I'm studying dentistry. And I'm wondering, same question in my country, why there is no people here?
Well, we hope that they're at home watching you right now.
Hi, this is Whitey.
So you'll be able to watch yourself, actually, in a few days on a computer. And I'll send you that link if you.
Okay.
Very good.
Hi, my name is Noor, I'm from Jordan. I'm studying with literature and cultural studies. I actually was very interested in our visit to Human Rights First in New York. It was very informative and really good conversation we had there. We had a lot of information, and that's it.
Can you tell us a little bit about where you went in New York?
We went to a lot of places. We went to BuzzFeed headquarters. We went to a Broadway musical play, Wicked. We went to... Bar and State Building.
Did you make it to the U.N., United Nations?
No.
Oh, interesting. Because you know there's the other program, which is for the scholars, also run by the State Department. And we had an event for them last month over at our historic structure. And they do visit the U.N. and also our military academy and everything like that. So.
We visited West Point. We spent a lot of time at West Point.
Oh, you did?
We spent a whole day there.
Oh, did you really? Interesting, okay, very good.
My name is Zama. I study English language and literature in Gaza, Palestine. I'm interested to hear your answer for their questions. And to ask, do the youth in Red Hook have a role here? Do you hear what they have, what their concerns are or their needs? And is there certain cases where you have responded to the youth's needs here?
Wow, that's a lot of questions. I will give you a quick answer, which is yes, yes, and yes. We respond, we do hear from youth, we need to do more of that. And we are trying to do more of that. And we are trying to work on programs for youth. In fact, we have a fairly new community center that's opened up. And we're trying to work together, the local government and groups, to make that community center be a place for kids of all ages and also adults of all ages, where they can come together and have a very positive experience. So, thank you.
My name is Nancy, I'm from Egypt. I also study medicine. I am particularly interested in psychiatry, but we do not specialize in anything until we're done, we're graduated. My visit here has been a whirlwind. My two favorite things have been the visit to West Point and the Museum of Modern Art. So, and I'm very interested in the structure of the community here. That there is a communication, there is open communication. That is something that I'm very interested in.
Very good.
I'm Tessa, I'm a Bard student. I'm working on the program for the summer. I'm actually really interested in hearing about the microhydro dams. I don't know where in the process that is, but I work in sustainability. So I was wondering what's going on with that.
Very good.
I'm Lila, I am also working with the program. I did this program last year as well. And I came here and had a similar meeting with the Red Hook Town Board. And I just really appreciate the interactions between local government officials that do a lot that goes unrecognized by bigger mainstream discourses about governance and getting to see.
Are you an American?
What?
Are you an American?
Yeah.
Initially, I thought everyone in the room was from Middle East.
He's working with Bard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard.
I'm Tima, I'm from Jordan. And actually, being here made me think that I don't even know what town's council, what are they doing in our country? So I'm really interested in going back home and find out.
Yeah, okay, very good. Well, we have a sister village over there in the Middle East. And actually, when we got together at Paul's house, as a matter of fact, we traded sort of, not stories, but what we do on a local level. And I spoke with their council. And it's interesting how many things were similar. And the issues that we deal with, which are a lot of one-on-one, people come in with particular issues and problems, and we try to solve them. We don't always solve them. But we do our best to try to help them. And so, all those thousands of miles away, it wasn't actually very different, what they work on and what we work on.
I'm Emma from Tunisia. I'm a management student. And I'm facilitator with participatory communal investment plan in my town. So it's so interesting being here, because I have small experience in managing such dialogues and things. So I want to develop my skills in there. And so this is so much interesting.
Hi, I'm Umnia from Iraq. I study English language and literature. I'm mostly interested about human rights and justice. And I'm here, this is the reason why I am here in the U.S. And I really want to know more about your job and what you guys do here in the council.
Very good. Well, a lot of what we do is manage a lot of the money and the programs in town. And we try to do as much planning as possible for the future. It's a lot of day-to-day stuff. And you'll see, especially with our next presentation, we're also doing things looking towards the future, creating a brighter future for the community as well. But it's not too unlike managing a business, except you have to do it differently, because it's the government and you don't treat people like you're just.
Well, I'm Tony from Egypt. I'm a medical student, my fourth year. I'm interested in studying neurosurgery when I graduate, so I'm waiting. Well, what I'm looking for, your answer for Al Hassan question, the first thing. And the whole thing, it's interesting for me, because I'm a board member in association, my university. So we're doing like a local journal assembly like this. So open discussion and such things, discuss the budget and issues going in the L C and such things. So it's interesting for me. And surely the whole program, yes. But I was waiting for the U.N. visit in New York. But I don't know, it's rescheduled such things out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then.
My name is Mashaline, I'm from Tunisia. I'm a pre-engineering freshman. I passed, Hamdallah. I would really love to know how things work here, because it's quite different from back home. For us governors and community members like this, they don't get elected, but the minister assigns them in each state. And that's what happened. It's quite a coincidence. Yesterday, my dad was assigned to become governor. So I'd like to know how things work here. And I'm going to go back home, see how things work there, to make it.
Well, I can't give you a full answer, but just to let you know, all of us up here are elected. We have four-year terms. So the people who reside in the township, which has two villages, Tivoli and the village of Red Hook, they come together in November of each year, and they vote on elections for the various levels of government. So for us, it's what they call a local year. Every two years, you will find some of us up for reelection, and we decide to try for that. And then others will be four years later. But they're four-year terms, and it's decided by the resident voters of the community.
I'm Albella from Egypt. I study medicine, 30 years, so I didn't choose my specialty yet. And I'm also interested in political science, and that is why I'm here in the program.
Very good, thank you. And the reason I asked about the specialties for medicine is only because I'm married to a doctor, so I. And I noticed one of you is a dentist. This young man over here is a dentist as well. So, okay, next.
Hello, I'm Alis from Egypt. I'm a fourth-year engineering student. I was interested like the system of the court and how you choose the members of this council. So Mashaline already asked that. So I also want to ask how, who mentors you? And what kind of report do you report to this upper, I don't know what it's called, like this upper thing before you, which you should report or something?
We actually report to 11,000 people who live around us. And they vote for us, they select us, run through that vote. And if they don't like what we do, we often hear from them. Usually while we're walking along the streets. And we're on TV whenever we're having these meetings. So the public watches it, and here's what we say. And if they don't like it, someone else is willing to comment to us personally. There are different levels of government in New York State. So you have a village, you have a town, where the town. Then you have what's called a county. So there are 22 townships in Dutchess County, and there are also several villages as well. And so there are times when we do report to them. But mostly, the decision-making is on the local level. So you have now village, town, county. You have 62 counties in New York State, five of which constitute New York City, and then 57 others outside of. And they also have to report to New York State sometimes. So there are some decisions up there that we have to follow, both on the state and the county level. Much of the decision-making is right here with these folks. And we do it with trying to reach out to our constituents as well.
Hello, my name is Ravi Bhatt from Palestine, computer engineering student. Interested in you guys, what's your experience, your background? And why you choose to work in the council?
Okay, sure, we'll give that a go. Shall we start with Sarah over here, who you know?
Hi. I'm Sarah, and I already talked to you at a previous event. But you know already my story a little bit, that I was a volunteer for a number of years before I ran for local office. And that I was looking to make a difference in my community and have what I considered a good local government job. And that I did a degree in public policy. And so that, you know, this is me living that out. So I really love my work, and I think we talked a lot about that before, so I'll leave it at that.
Bill?
Well, let's see. I was born and raised right here in Red Hook. And went to the high school in Red Hook. And my parents immigrated from Ireland, and their grandparents immigrated from Ireland. But my parents were born and raised in New York. So like a lot of Irish families in this part of the country, they would immigrate from New York City up into the country. So my parents came up here in the 1930s and started a farm in Red Hook. So I was born there. Went through our local high school, which we're very, very proud, in Red Hook, Red Hook Central School. And then went on to college at Brown University, and then went to Duke Law School. And then I served as a special agent in the FBI for a number of years. And then I worked as a prosecutor, a state court prosecutor in Dutchess County, when I came back to Red Hook. And was a lawyer for 50 years. And then was persuaded and perhaps had an inclination to try to represent the community in the government way here in the local area. And I had family in the past who had served the government and the community here, and I was touched by that. So I've enjoyed very much working here, and, you know, in the democratic way, as we say, we really are not responsible to anybody except the voters, you know, the citizens of the community. And that's the difference of, you know, an appointed official versus an elected official. You wonder the appointed person who is, or she has to be responsible to. But we do resolve issues as best we can and represent people as best we can. But one of the, somebody mentioned there weren't many people here tonight. But one of the standards you might consider when you see these local community governments in action, if you don't have a crowd of people, I think it's because the board gets along pretty well and we resolve issues in an amicable way. And I think that's been one of the keynotes in the town of Red Hook for many, many years. So we don't have a lot of citizens here, you know, complaining and watching what we do. And they trust us, and I think we trust them to do things in their best interests. And that's what we try to do.
Okay, Harry, do you want to go next?
Okay. My name's Harry Colgan. I was born in Brooklyn. I went to school and lived as a youth on Long Island. I went to college upstate at Cornell. And I worked for IBM for 35 years. And quite a few years ago, I retired from IBM, was self-employed for several years. And in the meantime, I've lived down in the southern part of the country, in what we would call below the Mason-Dixon line in the south. I lived in New York City for a number of years. And that was all while I was working for IBM. I moved here 17 years ago now. For 15 years since I moved here, I've been active in government, doing just what you see here, which is something I've kind of devoted myself to. I am now just over 39 years old. You have to be an American.
Did you scratch your numbers?
Yeah, pretty nearly. We had a comedian, a comedian in Jack Benny, and I'm sure you don't know of him, but he always said he was 39. I'm almost, almost reversed those numbers. Anyway, I've been active in the government here, in the town for 15 years. And looking forward to retire yet again in two more years, my term is up. And it's great to see you all here.
Thank you.
Jim?
Well, I grew up in Red Hook.
Well, I grew up in Red Hook. And I've always had a passion for the town, as I'm sure all of us up here, which is the reason we're here. When I completed my undergraduate, I came back and worked and I volunteered on different committees at the time. I was on our Conservation Advisory Council. And then I went back to school and then when I came back, I got involved in our committees once again and then decided to make a difference. I would like to actually be involved in the government of our town. And I ran for town board and I've been on the board here for a number of years at this point. And as I said, primarily because of, I like the town, I feel it's a great place to live, a great place for kids to grow up. And I have a passion for the town, so that's basically why I'm here.
Sue?
Oh, I didn't realize I was gonna be called. I love this community and any way I can help out and be a positive presence, that's why I'm here. I taught school for twenty years, so I dealt with very little ones. And sometimes I have very little ones that come to my window, so I still can deal with that. So I just am, I feel like this is, sometimes you wonder what you wanna do in your life. And this was my calling, I think, to do this particular position.
Well said. So I came to Red Hook accidentally, actually, twenty years ago, visiting friends. And a friend said, oh, you need to see this old farm down the road from my parents, his parents lived down the road from me. And I said, oh, we're not interested in that farm. And sure enough, it rained that day, we got out of the car and stopped raining. The next day I was on the phone trying to negotiate to buy the farm. And so, and ended up, yes, and I have a real estate background, so go figure, I didn't take much time considering. But it was sort of love at first sight and still is to this day. And so, yes, my wife and three daughters and I, we have a livestock farm. We raise everything from cattle, horses, goats, llamas, chickens. And so that's how I got involved actually is sixteen years ago, helping the community try to achieve its goals to protecting its farmland. A lot of the people in this community would like to preserve the farms into the future. And so we actually have quite a few programs and a lot of support from everybody, the people out there, the people up here to help preserve that. And there's lots of other things that the town needs as well. And so I'm here today because I'd like to help, that's all. And it is terrific to have you. I can't tell you how great it is to have these programs, which bring you all from so far away and give us an opportunity to meet you and find out what's going on in your lives and in your neighborhoods. So, thank you again. And anybody else have any? Oh, we have three more back. Sorry.
I'm Todd from Palestine. I study medicine. Most of my questions were answered during this discussion, but I'd like to know more about the structure of this board and how it functions. And do you hold like weekly or monthly meetings?
Yeah, we hold two meetings a month. One is on the second Tuesday of the month, which is today. And then the next one is on the fourth Wednesday. So it's essentially two meetings a month. Occasionally we'll have to call a special meeting because we have the deadline for something and we have to make a decision. And once in a while we'll cancel a meeting because the work is more in one part of the month or something. But essentially two meetings a month. And we function, we make decisions at the meetings, but we also communicate to each other in between so that we can actually get some things done. You know, on an individual basis, we try to gather the information, research, that kind of thing. So yeah, that's kind of how that works. And are you special, wanted to specialize in something?
I think internal medicine.
General medicine?
Internal medicine.
Say that again.
Internal.
Internal medicine, that's what my wife does. Do we get one if we get one? Next.
Hi, my name is Tada. I'm from Jordan. I study industrial engineering. I just wanna say I feel very lucky to be on a program like this, to get to experience something like this, to get to learn from all of these people every day, whether it's the students or people working on the program or the people like you. And just get to experience the American life and American culture. Yeah.
Very good, thank you. And I know with the scholars, it's six weeks, is it six weeks for your program?
Five weeks.
Next.
Hi, I'm Mashaline, I'm from Jordan. I also study medicine and surgery. Well, I have no more questions actually, but I just have to say that I love how any individual has the right to stand in your face and say whatever they want. They don't have to be lower study law. And also I love how Mr. Ross and Monsieur McKean, he's a dentist, he's a teacher, and they are in the town council. Like they don't have, you don't have to study law or study something to get here. You have to only care about your town. That's it. Thank you.
That's the good news and the bad news, no experience necessary. We hope we don't disappoint the people, yourselves included. So very good. Well, again, thank you all, welcome. Paul, another terrific group of individuals and keep up the great work at Bard College.
Thank you, everybody's story, thanks.
Yeah.
I wanted, I don't know if I should say this now, but I have a sense sometimes when students from other countries come here and they come to local level. You see these people sitting up here, it's like, what do they care about our country, what do they know about our country, stuff like that, you know? Sometimes that's the rap that America gets, American citizens. But I'll tell you real quick, I go through every country that's named. Iraq, daughter-in-law was there for half a year. And Kuwait and Iraq, some years ago. Jordan, a son who's been on at least two medical missions to Jordan with two of my grandchildren who've gone with him. Egypt, we had an exchange student from Egypt in high school years, my daughter. And a daughter who spent a wonderful summer in Palestine as an exchange student. What other country was mentioned?
You went to Canada entirely for a summer.
That's a little bit removed in the Middle East.
Well, if it's any consolation at the scholars dinner last month, there was a country I had to look up where it was, it was so remote. I have a proclamation for each one of you. Thank you all very much for coming. And Paul, would you be kind enough at some point to distribute, not now, but later? And I hope that you'll stay and watch just a little bit of the meeting and see how it goes. Okay?
Good job.
Very good. So item number two, we have a presentation. One of the things we're very excited about is we're doing a lot of work related to two important issues. One is the environment, having renewable energy, doing projects that will help us achieve addressing climate change. And the other is reducing the cost for our resident taxpayers. And so with that in mind, we have a brief presentation on a project that we have a grant out to further study. In fact, we're going to get this grant, we've been notified. It's on a community solar farm project. There's a technical name for it. We'll let Jeff Irish from Hudson Solar, who's been consulting with both the town and the village for the last year and change, on a joint effort that we wanna do with both our villages and our cultural institutions. It's a project we'd like to study potentially for a piece of land that's owned by the village of Red Hook and they're very excited about. And so without further ado, I will pull up. Jeff, if you'd be kind enough to tell the folks at home who you are and what you do.
Sure. Thanks, Robert. My name is Jeff Irish. I'm the president and owner of a solar design and installation company in the area here called Hudson Solar. We started fifteen years ago and we've installed close to two thousand solar systems in the Hudson Valley and the Albany area. I'm also a licensed professional engineer, practicing in this field. And I'm an active participant with the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority and the Public Service Commission on the Development of Solar Energy Policy in New York State. And I'm here to talk about community solar and specifically, I think, a very interesting project here utilizing some municipal land that could save the town and villages here over a million and a quarter dollars in the next twenty-five years. And also save some of the residents about a total of five million dollars over the next twenty-five years.
Let me know when it's time to flip. I do a fairly decent job as a page turner, but don't expect me to know.
One, okay. So the thing, the new thing here is community solar. It was implemented or introduced by New York State to a Public Service Commission order two years ago this month. And the goal was to open up solar to the other seventy-five percent of New Yorkers. One of the problems with solar is the people who have been able to benefit from it are those who have good sites. A good site generally means you have either a roof or some open land that is south-facing and is unshaded. And typically you also have to own the property. That's excluded almost by design, about seventy-five percent of people who either rent, own condominiums, are maybe thinking of moving or live in places like the village here where the roofs are small, there's a lot of trees and they can't site a solar system. So New York implemented this policy. It takes quite a while to get these systems engineered and permitted. The first systems are just starting to come online in the state now. To my knowledge, there's about six that have been turned on. What we're talking about are systems that look like this, typically on a piece of land that does not have a lot of other uses or can't be used for other things. Usually the ground-mounted solar systems. The benefit, of course, here is that you can orient them perfectly south, you can avoid shading and therefore you can maximize solar output. Number one question I've been getting since I started talking about this in the last few months is people say, okay, if there's a community solar system, do you have to run wires from that solar system to my house? Next chart. The answer is no, absolutely not. New York's come up with a clever way to allow community solar to be applied to anyone who has an electric bill. Credits from solar and community solar systems will be allocated monthly to any members that participate in the array. So I have an example here of Central Hudson's Community Distributed Generation Allocation Request Form. All you do down in the bottom there is list the account numbers, list the percentages of the output they get. And the credits appear on their electric bill monthly, just as though they had a system located at their own property. And with the same effect as though it was completely south-facing and unshaded. And anybody that has a utility bill can participate, government, business, renters, homeowners, literally anybody that pays the utility bill in Central Hudson's territory. So the project we've been working on here with the town and the village of Red Hook for the last year or more has to do with putting to use the land that is currently the well field, the water well field. By nature of being a water well field, there's almost nothing else you can do to that property. And we've designed through many iterations and many discussions with Central Hudson, a six-acre community solar system on that property. I went to my car and got a little pointer here.
Oh, it doesn't work on this screen?
This is a flat screen.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Would you like a ruler?
No, I'll go point, okay. The old-fashioned one. So there's a three-phase feeder, the Central Hudson feeder that's running here.
Jeff, do you wanna orient people, of course, to begin with?
Okay.
So show them where Town Hall is, maybe a recycling center, highway garage.
Town Hall would be over here. The new recycling center was under construction when this satellite image was taken. The recycling center is right here, sorry, this is the highway garage. Right, highway garage, this is the recycling center. There is the water tank right up here.
There are two of them there now.
Okay.
So the firehouse.
Firehouse Lane is along here and this is where we would put the solar field on top of the well field. There is, there are three Central Hudson feeders running through the area. One along Firehouse Lane and two up the east side here. We've had some discussions with Central Hudson, including some recently, about which would be the best feeder to connect into. They've determined it's the one on Firehouse Lane here. So the proposal for the project includes taking this existing single-phase feeder that runs and feeds the highway garage, converting it to a three-phase feeder and then extending it over towards the recycling center for a last pole right about here and then going underground to the solar field out there. One kind of neat thing about this is by having this project convert the single-phase line to three-phase, you've now got three-phase provision right next to the highway garage, which is also not a bad site for setting a solar system in the future. So this solar system would be about 2.2 megawatts DC in size. That's big enough to generate all of the electricity for approximately three hundred or more homes. Could completely eliminate their electric bill. Now, given that it's municipal land and that the town and village wanna participate in the project, we've come up with an innovative way to do the project and still make it economical. Solar systems are incentivized right now at the state and the federal level through a direct investment tax credit and also depreciation. Unfortunately municipalities aren't able to participate in tax credits or benefit from depreciation. So in the next few pages, I'll outline what we've proposed as a structure on how to get this project done to everyone's benefit. Basically three phases. The first phase would be the construction phase, the solar system would be engineered, constructed, and then sold to a third-party finance company selected through bidding. And an approximate or estimated price at this time would be that it would be about a four million dollar project. In years, three years, one to five, the finance company would own the solar system and sell the electricity through what's called the Power Purchase Agreement or PPA to the town, village of Red Hook and the village of Tivoli and to residents at about ten percent below what Central Hudson is charging. So everybody would be cash flow favorable out the gate. Approximately twenty percent of the output would go to the town of Red Hook, the village of Red Hook and the village of Tivoli. About eighty percent would be allocated somehow. And that would have to be decided for the benefit of residents in the community. But they too would benefit through a ten percent reduction in their electric bills. During that five-year period, the finance company would use and retire the federal investment tax credit and the depreciation on the system. At the end of year five, the beginning of year six, the finance company would sell the depreciated solar system to the town for about half of the original price, or about two million dollars. At that point, you've got a solar system that's operating, that's being maintained and is largely still under warranty through the entire twenty-five years. And it just sits there in the sun every day and makes electricity for free. The fuel is free. The only ongoing cost would be approximately maybe five to ten thousand dollars of maintenance, mowing, daily monitoring, occasional tightening of wires, connections, that kind of thing. But basically it sits there in the sun, it generates electricity for free. So the concept I've kind of worked out is that the town, village and Tivoli could then get twenty years of free electricity on all of their meters. The residents then would save about fifty percent on their electricity from year six to twenty-five. So going solar or not going solar is really a pretty simple decision. I mean, the easiest thing is just not to do it, it's easy. You can continue to buy electricity from Central Hudson, they'll be there to provide it, that's their job and their lot in life. If you do that, the town, village and Tivoli will spend about 1.3 million dollars on electricity over the next twenty-five years. And the group of residents will spend 8.4 million. If you do go with this project, the town. If you do go with this project, the town, village, and Tivoli will spend approximately $200,000 on electricity in the next 25 years, and the residents will get to spend $3.5 million. So, there's an opportunity here for the governments in this town and village and the residents to save approximately $6 million in total savings over the next 25 years in electricity purchases. And this is just the financial story. I mean, the environmental story, of course, is that all of this electricity comes from the sun and all of the wonderful benefits that gives as far as reducing pollution and a lot of other things. That's it.
Okay, very good, Jeff, thank you very much. While you're there, just a couple of things, points, questions for those folks who may not be familiar with the Community Distributed Generation Program in New York. It requires a certain mix of large users and community users, residents, as part of this incentivized program because the state incentives are based upon not having more than a certain percent of 25 KW users over others. And there's a strong interest on the part of not only the municipal governments, but of the cultural institutions to participate as well. I know the Red Hook Library reached out to me when we were doing the Clean Energy Communities Grant and wanted to know if they could get solar on top of the library. And this is a really good example of how participating in a solar farm would perhaps be more appropriate than putting solar panels on top of, you know, a historic, what I believe is an octagonal building in our village. And certainly, the fact that the taxpayers support both the library and the governments and would get a reduction in costs, there's yet another way that they could benefit. The budget includes money for fencing and screening. And there will be a few people who live near there, not many, but there's quite a buffer between the homes and this proposed project, and there's money allocated for full screening of the solar system. So, this relates to that municipal innovation grant application that we sent out to the county. We applied for money for the fee that Central Hudson charges, which is $35,000, to do the interconnect study. And Jeff, if you could just maybe elaborate a little bit about what the interconnect study is that Central Hudson charges for.
We submitted an application on behalf of the town almost a year ago into Central Hudson. It has passed their preliminary review, but we're now at the point where Public Service Commission interconnection requirements for a system this size stipulate that what's called a coordinated electrical system interconnection review, or CSER study, be done. Central Hudson's standard charge for that is $35,000. The purpose of this study is to examine the effect of this system on the electric grid, make sure that it does not cause any system protection or regulation issues, and does not potentially cause substation backfeed. You are all served here by the substation down in Rhinebeck, and they want to make sure that it doesn't get backfed because they've never been, substations have never been designed and built like that in this country. We have had a series of meetings with Central Hudson, the latest one was on Friday, where we were with their electrical engineers. We reviewed the three circuits that I talked about earlier and the benefit of connecting onto the three-phase feeder that runs on Firehouse, down Firehouse Lane. We went through some of the system protection and interconnection issues. There would be no risk of substation backfeed, they think, from that circuit, and the interconnection costs would be relatively minor. So, we've, that was really good news for the project, but New York State's policy does require that the interconnection study be done to proceed. We're also, because these projects are popular and people want to, a lot of people would like to implement them, there's a timeline, there's a rigid timeline stipulated by Public Service Commission order. This project has until this coming Friday, July 14th, to either pay the $35,000 for the interconnection study that I referred to, or it will be automatically removed from Central Hudson's queue. So, that's.
But is the CSER study, is that part of the feasibility study? Or that's in addition to the $45,000?
No, no, that's. No, that is the, that is the study. The $35,000 CSER study is the utilities feasibility study.
So, you're not asking the town for an additional $35,000 in addition to the $45,000?
No, no, he's just explaining what the CSER study is. No, the application.
The way it's worded, though, Robert, it seems like it's a separate deal.
Well, we'll get to the resolutions in a second. The application we submitted to the county was for $45,000, $35,000 for this study, another $5,000 so we could finish off the solar zoning, pay for those costs, and for some, you know, legal and engineering that we might need. And so, we were told late last week, we are going to receive the grant for $45,000. In fact, they're going to make the announcement this week, we're just on a tight timeframe.
Before the 15th?
Yeah, before the 14th is when we need the check.
Friday.
Which is Friday, so that's how tight a tight line we are. But, so that's terrific news, and, you know, we'll find out more about the project costs. We were able to get a really good handle from Central Hudson. I think they're almost excited about this project because it happens to be on the circuit that goes down Route 9, where they expect an increase in demand for electric. As that area develops out, the Hoffman Project will be on that circuit, for example. And were this to be constructed, this project, as Jeff mentioned, it helps us twofold because, you know, we went out for that Clean Energy Communities Grant where we're putting the solar on the highway garage. And by upgrading the three-phase to the highway garage, that saves us ironically just about another $35,000 we had budgeted for that state grant because we were certified Clean Energy Communities. So, we will have less of a contribution for that project, which included the insulation, remember, and all that. So, that's where we are, and that's, I think that's very helpful. More questions, do folks have questions, Sarah?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is this on? I don't know if this is on, can you hear me, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so if we get the panels on the highway garage, how does that balance? Like, what if Town Hall doesn't need any more electricity and we don't, you know, like, what would happen? Or let's say something happens with the village and they don't need that particular source of energy. Does that then just make more energy available to the residential pool?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The.
So, we're not locked in to any specific slice of that pie, and at any point we could change the.
Correct. That, that Central Hudson allocation form that I showed up requires that the project operator or sponsor submit a spreadsheet, literally a spreadsheet, once a month to the utility, and you can move the utility credits to any Central Hudson account number at all.
Yeah, and the system on the highway garage wasn't enough to take care of the town's needs. We have everything from energy guzzlers like the water department, obviously with all the pumping, is a big user, and so we have plenty of accounts to offset and save the taxpayers money on. Other, other questions?
Yeah, I'm also wondering why, why Tivoli's included, only, not that I don't want them to be included, I hope they will be, but just because we had gone in with the village of Red Hook on this grant? So, is that just because it's another municipality, or?
There's not a question for me?
Yeah.
I'm the engineer who's designing this.
Yeah, we opened it up to both villages to see if they would participate. Under this scenario, the village of Red Hook would actually get a little bit more money for a lease payment because it's their property. But, you know, when we have the opportunity to save our taxpayers some money in both villages, you know, we opened it up, and the village trustees are very excited in both villages. In fact, last night, the village of Red Hook passed their resolution to administer the grant. One of the two resolutions we have in front of us tonight.
Just real quickly, you know, I mean, especially for the students, we're talking about benefiting 300 residential properties, but how do we choose who the 300 are? Is it a lottery?
No, the system is large enough to benefit 300 and eliminate their electric bills completely.
But how do we pick the 300?
You could give a portion to every single utility account number in Central Hudson's territory, in your town, if you'd like.
Oh, I see.
We have, we offer it to the public, and we'll have to have some criteria for signing up by a certain date and a commitment and that kind of thing. But it's a, it's a community project that is geared towards the community residents. It's something that's called upon in New York State and it's called upon in our plans. In fact, our plans call for this type of a project, so.
Your average house would have its electric bill eliminated with 19 solar modules in a project like this. You can take as many, as little as three under New York State's regulations or anything in between. Just can't take more than you use. So, you could give three to everybody, you could allocate, you know, four, there's all, it's really up to the communities to determine how they would want to allocate the savings.
Okay, any other questions folks have? And this just gets us more information to decide if we want to do the project, but it takes what we have as a rough estimate, and it'll give us a finite estimate, and then we can work on more of those specifics on the program and so on and so forth. But we'll have a really sharpened pencil by the time, and we're talking about several months. We'll, we'll get this interconnect result in 60 days, is that right, Jeff?
Sixty Central Hudson days, which are four days, which is three months to the rest of the stuff.
Oh, interesting, okay. Sixty Central Hudson, I've never heard it expressed that way. Okay, so if there are no further questions, we have two resolutions in front of us. One is authorizing the CSER, the expenditures from the grant monies that are going to be allocated. And then the other resolution is in agreement to work with the village, since it's a joint project. And we should take the first one, which is Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Village of Red Hook Regarding Studies of Community Distributed Generation. That would be Resolution Number.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, we number our resolution, our actions that we do here, dated July 11th, 2017. And I won't read the whole resolution, but it authorizes the agreement with the village to administer this grant when it comes in. And it talks about the project cost of $45,000, and it says the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor or in his absence, the deputy supervisor, to execute a municipal shared service agreement for administration of this grant. And the village passed a very similar resolution the night before, which is also in our folders. And I so moved the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you, Jim. We have a second resolution, which is Resolution now thirty-seven, dated July 11th, 2017, which authorizes the expenditure of $35,000 to be sent to Central Hudson to complete the study, to give us the results. And there is a chance that it could be less than $35,000, but I don't want to jinx that by saying that.
A confusing thing, this, this resolution doesn't include that, that's a joint expenditure by all, by the participants of our agreement here. Is that correct?
It's, we're the lead, we're the lead applicant, so I suspect that all the monies are going to go through us for this $45,000 grant.
So, it's not just the town, oh yeah?
Yes, but it is a joint.
By the way, that.
It is a joint.
Jim, would you like it to say the town of Red Hook submitted a joint application with the village of Red Hook?
I, I would think it would make more sense if it said that because it'd be more clear.
Okay.
With the village of Red Hook or both villages?
No.
No, the application was just the two.
Is what this speaks to.
Yeah, because the town and the village have been working together on this for a year and change.
So, this is just relating to administration of the grant itself.
Right, so Modified Resolution Number Thirty-seven, whereas the town of Red Hook submitted a joint application with the village of Red Hook for a municipal innovation grant to finance the study of the feasibility of construction of 1.7-megawatt photovoltaic system on village-owned land within the town to provide for community distributed power generation. And whereas the town has received notice, it expects to receive the grant in the amount of $45,000 for such studies. And whereas a part of the feasibility analysis of the proposed photovoltaic system, it is necessary to conduct this interconnection review. Now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook that the town hereby authorizes the expenditure of $35,000 for the CSER study to be completed by Central Hudson. And I so moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
No, I want to discuss it.
Oh, you do, okay.
I think it's very clever that the village of Red Hook in their resolution used the language that this was contingent upon being financed by the grant in the amount of $45,000.
You want that in here?
This resolution, as it's written, again, it seems to speak like the town is into, is on the hook for $35,000 whether we get that grant or not.
Okay.
And I oppose that very, very much.
Okay, so let's use the same language in the village, then?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, everything here is contingent upon getting that $45,000 grant.
Absolutely.
We have language like that, Chris?
Now therefore be resolved.
We just take them away from the village resolution and add a Tars as a third whereas?
Sure. Now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook that the town hereby authorizes the expenditure for the CSER study to be completed by Central Hudson, contingent upon. Contingent upon. Uh. It being financed by the municipal innovation grant monies. So, I sent.
Has the full $45,000.
Yeah.
So, from a practical perspective, you obviously aren't going to get grant monies before you're proposing to.
Right, we're going to get the grant award.
Just their funds.
Right.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, we're going to get the grant awards, but the paperwork and all that stuff.
The grant will take a while.
The problem with that is we have to spend that money by this Friday, do I not?
That's what I hear. Danny can probably.
To complete, otherwise, we're taken off the list.
A little bit of a rush here, but.
We've got no choice.
If we use that language, if we don't get the grant, is something going to happen with that grant, do you think, in the meantime?
Well, the county's not going to back out over a grant award, I don't think.
If you look at the budget, the budget that, that was proposed of the $4 million, there is some money allocated in there potentially for being able to pay that fee.
For the project.
So, so, so the, so it's covered either way.
If it gets constructed. The difference is who, who, who actually, where the money comes from.
Well, the, our, the problem is, is really, it's a racing condition to be able to beat the clock. You can't, you know, if you don't have a check in hand, if Central Hudson doesn't have a check in hand, they're not going, they're going to kick us out of the queue. We're just, because that's just their policy right now. So, so.
I think the county is very trustworthy.
So, we have the county as, as one potential, you know, payer for, to be able to, we know that that grant is forthcoming, or we.
We know, I confirmed it with.
So, we are spending money before we really have it in hand.
Well, with a lot of our, with a lot of our grants, we do that, a lot of our grants are reimbursable. And most of our grants are reimbursable.
So, what would you propose, Phil?
Well, I mean, to tell Central Hudson to back up their, their deadline of July 15th or something.
It doesn't work that way, it's not Central Hudson rules, it's the Public Service Commission.
Public Service Commission.
July 14th deadline is part of a Public Service Commission order.
They are required to.
Yeah. Now, Robert, you got an assurance from the county that this grant is.
I did. From the people who administer the program, and I called my, one of my compatriots, who's a town supervisor who sits on the program committee, and yes, confirmed, and I said, is there any chance that we wouldn't get it? For the program people.
Is there any chance we can get it in writing before the 14th? Is there any chance we can get it in writing before the fourteenth?
Uh, I, they, they hope to announce it before the fourteenth, but, you know.
Today's the eleventh.
The check that they cut by, from the town to Hudson Solar or not?
No, 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 Central Hudson.
Central Hudson.
Central Hudson.
All right, shall we?
So I, I just, for the board, I just want to be clear, you announced a, an amendment to the resolution, which I'm not sure that will work, given your parameters. If you say that it's contingent upon being financed by, that implies that you're gonna have the money on your hand.
Oh, so the phraseology is not good.
And if that's what you mean, I don't think that's gonna work for you.
Con- contingent upon it being reimbursed?
A commitment to, for the payment of the money.
Okay, the commitment, uh.
I don't know that you have anything other than an expectation of a grant award, right?
Okay, contingent upon it being.
You're not gonna have a written grant agreement at the same time.
It's a bad, it's a bad idea, but it seems like we're under the gun, right?
I understand, and, and just trying to.
We didn't introduce our county attorney, Chris Shaw, who gives us wonderful advice whenever we're going through our technical motions here to make sure we dot all of our i's and cross our t's.
Uh, contingent upon it being, what's the phraseology you would like to meet the situation? Contingent upon it being reimbursed by the municipal grant. Municipal innovation grant program.
Well, I think if you expect to make a disbursement.
Contingent, we have been assured that we will be.
It's a circular logic.
It is.
Contingent upon it being reimbursed.
Sure.
What about the second cost to redo the substation? You'll pay for that.
No, there's no cost to do the redo the substation, that's what he told you. In the presentation.
They got the, they have the three phase on our house lane now, correct?
Right, what's gonna happen? Three phase line. The poles that, the single phase line that comes down to, that feeds, um, the highway garage will be converted, they'll add three poles there, then they'll add another pole probably and then go underground through our property, through.
We, we wouldn't have to pay for the modification of the local substation, like you talked about?
Well, that's, the, the CSER is gonna determine that. The, the CSER, the study, is really looking at what type of upgrades that would be necessary.
And how much they're worth?
Well, that's what, that's the purpose of the CSER, it's catch twenty-two, you, you know, you gotta pay to play. You gotta know whether or not you're gonna be able to, you know, what the, but we've, as, as, as Jeff had pointed out, we've met with the CDG, the Community Distributed Generation Team from Central Hudson, and they're showing some very positive information about the substation, that the substation will not probably have to be upgraded.
Can, can the CSER study
Yes.
begin after we get the check from the grant?
No, no.
It's gotta begin right away.
Yes, what happened was projects ahead of us all dropped out, which caused our deadline, you know, caused our deadline to move up.
Because they couldn't.
But.
Otherwise you could say, uh.
We're there. What, what about these words? Contingent upon it being reimbursed by monies anticipated from the municipal innovation grant program.
There's nobody for us to sue then, right? We get stuck with the thirty-five thousand. That CSER study has to begin right away?
Well, it may not be right, but they, they're.
You need to pay to keep, keep your project.
They need, we need to be able to comply with the order that says we're ready to go with the CSER and, and that has, that, the deadline is the fourteenth, which is a steel date.
Who does the CSER study?
Central Hudson.
See, that comes.
An independent engineering firm, actually, that's, that's under contract to Central Hudson.
Under contract.
It's also the element of the highway garage, it's important that we have, we have three-phase circuitry to the highway garage. Because that, that building was built for this very purpose, not.
Exactly.
But it, but it, Jeff, Jeff, have you looked at that, at the highway garage and what, what can we put on, on there? It's almost half an acre or thereabouts.
We have that application out, with, with clean energy communities, right?
Yeah, that's that.
It's, uh, the, this, the solar system you can put on the highway garage is limited by the fact that it's only serving a single phase power.
Well, yeah, I realize this, but this will get a three-phase right, right to it.
Can't do official announcement.
So you can't say this?
Confirmation.
With, with three-phase position, this is project, you could fill the room.
They, they do their announcements on their own, it's coming soon.
Both, both sides.
Yeah. That'd be great.
It has to be.
And I don't know what you're gonna put here, that's.
Contingent upon it being reimbursed by monies anticipated from the municipal grant innovation program?
It's pretty circular, I mean, I don't know what that means, because you're gonna.
It's not.
What is like circular stuff?
Do you have better, better language we can work with?
No, I mean, we're gonna write the check now, so you're either comfortable with that or you're not, you know?
Right.
I'm okay with that, I don't know, we can pull the board and see, yeah.
Writing the check?
That sounds good enough to me, circular or not, Robert.
Okay, thank you.
If Tim Ross said he'll vote for it, then I'll vote for it.
Thank you. All right, good, I have it written here. I'll, I'll call for a second.
That's democracy.
Second, I'll second your amendment.
Thank you very much, and here it is, and I'll, okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, thank you so much, Sue McCann, there it is. Good luck with that. We normally are more organized than that.
Congratulations.
Democracy is messy.
Go get ice cream, yeah, go to the hotel.
Thank you for coming. Uh, Steve, Steve, can we take a three-minute break? Okay, we're back, we took a very brief, um, intermission there. And we are now on agenda item, Harry, what? Agenda item three, discussion, streetlight conversion project. So, my office has been forwarding to you a lot of documents from the Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium relating to the, the proposed conversion of our streetlights to LEDs. This is a, a good follow-up to our previous agenda item. This is another initiative that will save our taxpayers, because all of them pay for the general account. And, uh, the customers in the lighting district, significant dollars. And it will give us the opportunity to control those costs and to lower those costs dramatically. We are at the point now where we've had some analysis, preliminary analysis sent to us, a range of, uh, expected costs associated with the acquisition and replacement of the streetlights. And some of that analysis has been sent to you. And I will get back to that.
Too many pages to print.
I apologize, I know, well, that's why I gave you tonight just one of those summary sheets.
Do we have anything in writing from, from the Town Energy Committee?
On the streetlights?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about the Town Energy Committee recommending stuff, but.
Would you like something in writing from them, okay Bill?
Well, how do we know that, I don't even know that committee, frankly.
Yes, you do, that's Dennis who was here, where did he go, just left.
He was.
Um, Laurie, Paul.
But how do they communicate with the town board when they make a recommendation or decision?
All right, we will get them to communicate to you on the streetlights.
They have studied the advisability of converting lighting fixtures and recommend further study of such conversion, that's it?
I, I think what, from my point of view, the, the, the street lighting is, is an aesthetic thing, as, as much as it is an efficiency thing.
That's.
I mean, the street lighting, if it's done poorly, it would really, really, can, can diminish your quality of life.
Well, it's not, that's not gonna happen, 'cause we've, we've asked you whether or not you can be the lighting division
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
and work with, with these groups to do that. I know how passionately you care about that area, so.
Yeah, I think it's a big, I think it's a big, to me, it's a big deal that you, that you don't want the, you know, floodlights sticking in your front window.
Exactly, and another one of those time is of the essence, um, there's no deadline here associated with this, but we are paying an enormous rental fee for the lights that we have with Central Hudson right now on an annual basis, so the sooner we acquire them, um, the better, the sooner we can take advantage of those savings. We have two districts, as I said before, one is the general, one is consolidated. For the folks at home, a lot of this financial analysis just goes over all the costs associated with the acquisition, replacement, and the maintenance of the lights. And what it has told us in general, and it's a range of costs and expenses, is that converting these lights can pay for themselves in as little as three years and change to up to as much as six plus years. But we will save thousands and thousands of dollars each and every year under every one of those scenarios for the lighting districts.
So why do we need a study then?
Because, uh, the bean counters have to count the beans, all right? And the way it works with a lighting district, any special benefit district, if we are going to make any changes to those taxing districts, we have to issue a report. And I think I sent to you the consultant, who we get for free, by the way, under the Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium, George Woodbury, who's been involved in seventeen hundred municipalities changing their lights, does, when he works for money for clients, prepares this report, which, um.
But, but the resolution doesn't say who's gonna do the, uh, report for how much money. So does that have to be in the resolution?
Um, it does speak about the engineers working with the energy committee and the Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium, and also, this guy is gonna give us a lot of free work.
So who pays Crawford and Associates, they do it for nothing, is that?
That's gonna come, those costs come out of both our general expenses and the lighting district. It'll be a function of converting the lights and an expense that, um, will be offset by all those savings that we generate when we convert.
Do we have an estimate from them, what the cost?
We, we don't have an estimate from them. What, we're, what we're shooting for is something very short, sweet and simple, nothing like the one that I sent around to you, which is comprehensive. We actually have a lot of that material, you've been sent it digitally. It just needs to be compiled in a very brief document that says, here are the maps, here are the lights, here are the poles, here's what we have, here are the expected costs to acquire, expected costs to replace, and detail the lights. And, and then put that out for the folks, the public, and also for the folks in the lighting district. And there are steps.
Who prepared this as a starting point?
That's the Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium.
That's the consortium's start.
Right, and that's an ICERTA-funded entity to assist municipalities in taking possession and owning and operating their own lights. And lots of municipalities are in the process of doing this, many have already completed it. Um, Poughkeepsie, Beacon, Kingston, those kinds of things. We are working in conjunction with both villages, um, I should tell you. So both villages are, uh, are now catching up to us in this process. We are also through the Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium, talking about working with the town and village of Newpalls and the town of Rosendal, of Rosendale, for a group procurement to try and do a, a large purchase of the lights when we get to that stage, so that we can save even more money.
But this resolution should talk something about what is, what we're gonna pay Crawford and Associates.
Or not to exceed or something like that.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have that, it's, you know, like, this is our engineering firm, and often we, um, employ our engineers to do engineering for us, and it's just to compile a report in a, a simple format so that it can be accessed.
Why do we need a resolution then?
Well, you could put a not to exceed, or, you know.
Yeah, we can put a not to exceed.
There should, there should be something about how much you're gonna pay them.
Well. It's like giving them a car wash, I have no idea what they're gonna charge us to do this.
Okay, well, sure, let's put a not to exceed number in there.
What, what have they told the committee that they would, that would cost to do this report?
We have not asked the engineers for an estimate, but I'm happy to put a not to exceed amount. I mean, we certainly wouldn't want anything above ten thousand dollars. I'm thinking this is a, a few thousand dollars to compile this max, so, you know, two or three thousand probably.
Dennis leave already?
Yeah.
Dennis left?
Yeah, and it's a simple, it's a simple thing that we're required by law to, to put in front of a special benefit assessment district.
All right.
Would you like to do five thousand? As a not to exceed? In the resolution, folks? It's awfully quiet in here.
That's all right, maybe.
But we're kind of working in the dark, that's why it's quiet.
Well.
Somebody should enlighten us.
Da-dum-boom. Um, can we live with five thousand? We're gathering all the information so that really, most of the work is gonna be done for them. We're asking the Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium, see all the documents that, um, you've been sent over the last four weeks. We have all the maps, we have the maps digitally now prepared with the poll numbers. We've done our inventory, you've been sent all that inventory analysis. So those maps.
To, to ask the town board by resolution to authorize somebody to do a, a report, or engineer to do a report, without saying anything about what the cost is or something, is really a little dead.
Five thousand?
I don't know, I have no idea.
Well, the longer we wait on, on moving this project forward, the more we pay for the rental. Can we live with five thousand, folks?
I don't care, it's fine.
Or we could get an estimate from them and then, what on next one?
Uh, we could get an estimate, I'd rather just give them a small budget and ask them to do it, but that's, that's me.
The trouble with giving them a small budget like that, Robert, chances are they'll use the whole budget regardless.
You want, you wanna go three, Jim? I think we'll need a good.
Can we authorize them to do this, um, after they give us a, a budget? Would that include that in our resolution?
Okay, and if we don't like the budget amount, then what do we do?
Also, what is, what is a task order?
Task order is, um, we have a current contract with them, and when we ask them to do specific pieces of work, then we ask them to, um, give us an estimate of the, of the work for the scope that we're asking for, and then that's the basis on which we would pay them.
And that's called a task order?
Right, the task order would be.
Shouldn't it have, shouldn't it have an estimate of the value?
Or something, certainly, you can pick an estimate.
Or, yeah, or not to exceed.
Right.
Look for the task order project to be gotten.
So the task order, that will give us an estimate prior to doing it.
Right. Right. So if you say authorizes a task order not to exceed X, then you would actually ask them for the task order ta- task order before you authorize them to do the work.
What does it, how does it work to find, I think I can, I can read it.
They're summarizing proposed.
And you know, work with Mid-Hudson Streetlight Consortium and Towns Energy Committee, prior to the report, summarizing the proposed lighting facilities, approved, said to estimate the maximum cost, expected annual costs and proper allocation thereof.
And by allocation, we need, because the project will include general, um, fixtures as well as the consolidated lighting district fixtures, right?
Okay, why, why do we? I don't, I don't, I don't even feel as though we, we need to have them do that. This, this is, this is gonna be done mostly by the, by the, by the, is there any finance to?
It, it is, it is essentially mostly completed already. All they're going to do is compile it for us in a nice little packet that we can put in front of the folks in the lighting district, 'cause that's a legal requirement, so.
Does it take the engineering firm to do that after, after the?
Well, when they charge us five thousand two hundred dollars, somebody's gonna say, how come they didn't tell us?
Well, I thought we were down to three thousand dollars, I'm happy with not to exceed.
I, I, I don't think it should be very much at all.
Yeah.
Well, is it a bigger pain, though, if they come back with a task order that says they can't do it for less than thirty-eight hundred, and then we're gonna have to pass a new one anyway, or we could wait until they estimate it and then vote on it?
I think it's better to do, to go ahead, in my personal opinion, go ahead and vote on it, and if they say sorry, we need more money, then we can consider that. Um, I wanna keep this ball moving, because every month we wait, we waited four months for the contract. We waited four months for the contract from Central Hudson. The price on the, on the lights went up.
But, Robert, somebody's gotta tell our committees, when they ask the town board to take action, keep the thing rolling and meet deadlines, they have to give us information. And the simplest information is, we're gonna authorize a report, what is it, what's the cost or what's the limits? You know, that's simple information. Anyway, we should tell the committees that. However, um...
Well, I reached out to Crawford and Associates a couple of weeks ago and said we would be looking for a lighting district report. I got nothing back from them. So I don't have a number for you, unfortunately, but I think we should just pick a number we're comfortable with. Again, it's, you know, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars we're gonna be saving our taxpayers and lighting district residents. Time is the money here. And, uh, well, do we take the risk of the lights going up and, and pricing it?
Yeah, when they give you prices, Central Hudson install these new lights, could we own them? Is that how it works?
No, we install them. So we go out on a group procurement to acquire the lights, install the lights, and maintain the lights. It's a one-stop shop kind of a, a thing, and we group with other municipalities.
And how does Central Hudson bill us for that? 'Cause they provide the electricity to each and every street light.
That's right, and we will still get billed and, and it's, uh, yeah, we will still get billed from Central Hudson. But we will own the lights. And the only thing they will charge us for is a nominal, uh, poll fee. But we'll own both the lights and the hardware.
And the fixture.
Yeah.
Will be charged a poll fee and the electricity we used to...
Yeah, and that's, all factoring in.
Is part of the study gonna, gonna let us know what that will be?
All that's in there, all that's in those numbers. So when you see for the one account, an annual savings of twenty thousand nine hundred per year, that's factoring all that. And like with the previous presentation that was put up there for you, those numbers are conservative. We expect the savings to be even greater, but better to err on the side that says you'll have a certain amount of... Alright, so if you, if you will indulge me for a second and look at the top of the screen, I'll try to blow it up here. This is for the one account.
Each account, your honor.
I am, uh, I am, uh, consolidated, okay? The people in our lighting districts. The annual savings, and this is under the one end of the range. The annual savings here is twenty thousand four hundred forty-six dollars. I'll blow that number up some more, so you can see that. That's that number. Twenty thousand four hundred forty-six dollars, which is something crazy like seventy percent of what we are charging. Well, not what we are charging, but what the, the folks in the lighting district are paying right now. And our lighting district budget is something like twenty-nine thousand dollars. And this would save twenty thousand four hundred of them. And here are all the calculations you see, Jim, below it. Old fixture buyback, one-time cost, design and project management, new fixture purchase, new photocell, new fixture installation. One of the things we're, we're looking at as a group procurement is buying lights, because Harry's very sensitive about lights, and we know that other residents are as well. Buying lights that will dim. So that if we go and look at some of these streetlights and say, no, 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 that's not the right application, and these lights have something like nine different settings that you can adjust.
Um, I just wanna say, I agree with Bill about the need for committees to give, you know, some kind of like a memo or a report to the board if they're gonna be included in some kind of resolution. But I do also wanna point out that when we did the approval for, I forget what it's called, but it's a, I think, Clean Energy Communities project with the, with the state. The energy committee was here, Paul and Lori and Dennis. And they, as part of their presentation on that project, they did talk about the streetlights, so... And they were saying that they, that it was a, you know, a good energy efficiency measure to pursue, and they had a bunch of numbers about it, so... I mean, in my mind, that's, that is them telling us we ought to pursue it, but I agree with Bill that we gotta have something in writing.
Oh, I definitely think we gotta pursue it. Just how much did we spend to pursue it?
Yeah.
We gotta have some control over that.
Well, the, yeah, all the monies associated with the project are there. This is just to draft the report. That's a legal requirement. So that it's, we can condense all the stuff that you've been sent in an easier redocument.
Yeah, but you say the money's already there to pay Crawford and Associates to do the report?
Well, actually, we have money in the engineering line, yes, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, I mean, uh...
Yeah, the money is there. Okay, so as soon as we can get on with this, this, as soon as we can save our taxpayers... And by the way, all these projects are listed in our adopted climate action plan, including a two-megawatt system proposed for community solar. And that was adopted five years ago.
I don't think anybody's got a problem with the, you know, the, the purpose of the action and the necessity to do it. It's just questioned as a blank piece of paper to Crawford and Associates is not quite the way to do business.
Well, they haven't, they haven't given an estimate. They haven't given an estimate, and I reached out to them two weeks ago on this and said, can you, can you help? Have you done a lighting district plan? So...
Why don't we just, well, I mean, we could wait. I, I just think waiting two weeks isn't that, it's a good deal if it's important to enough of the four members.
It's not like July fourteenth deadline, right?
No, it's not that deadline, but again, every month we wait, we take the risk that Central Hudson will raise the prices. And that is times hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of lights, because you're talking about the township.
But this is just for the study. We haven't taken any action.
That's my point, is that this is a requirement. Now, if we have engineers that are, you know, not charging the going rate, then that's a problem. But we have to have a report compiled, and all I will tell you is that...
Well, what's the going rate we pay Crawford on the task?
Through the notes, I think, is...
Okay.
Sorry.
Hourly rate.
It's an hourly rate, which is standard hourly rates. I will tell you, most of this work is already done for free by this grant. Okay?
Might be, but we can't ask you for the estimate.
You're, you're, you're being difficult about...
We can't ask you for the estimate. I wanna hear that from Crawford or somebody.
We, we don't have an estimate today. And my point is eighty to ninety percent of the work is already done. It just needs to be compiled.
Maybe, hopefully.
So what about a not to exceed rate of like thirty-five hundred or something?
I said three, thirty-five hundred. I'm happy with that.
I like three.
Okay, let's go three.
Okay, let's go three and let's get on with the meeting. Okay.
Well...
Alright, uh, a task order, da-da-da-da-da, to prepare a report, um...
If you're gonna add it, I would suggest that you say the town board hereby authorizes a task order not to exceed three thousand dollars for Crawford and Associates.
Not to exceed...
Then, Jim says that they'll charge us three thousand right off the top. Anyway.
Well, we don't need to tell them what we approved, okay?
But they have to, they have to bill us at the hourly rate.
They have to bill us and they have to get it done. That's how that works.
That's how that works. I think it was a task order at an hourly rate.
They get a couple hundred an hour.
I mean, they can give you a not to exceed estimate too, but...
So how mu- how much they get an hour, two hundred?
Alright. Build it here apart.
It's a principle or...
Yeah, they have different rates for people, and I don't...
Twenty hours, but you...
Okay. You, you might have missed the moment where I said we gotta keep this moving, 'cause we're gonna be here till midnight.
Anytime you rush for judgment or you press is a bad, bad action.
Oh, you wanna go? You wanna go with this resolution?
If you wanna end it, then we should just say we'll do it in two weeks, so...
Put the lights on, of course.
Alright, not to exceed three thousand dollars, yes? Uh, slightly amended from Sarah's thirty-five hundred. Bill, three thousand.
And that's all part of the study, and it's been that...
Would you so move, sir? It's your three thousand, or shall I move?
Go ahead, move. I'm not gonna move. I mean, I'll vote, but I'm smart.
Alright, I so move. Sarah, would you like to second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, thank you very much. Further discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much. Okay. We have item number four. It is a quick one, hopefully, Harry. Trying to catch your attention. We have a resolution last year, Bard, uh, applied to the New York State Office of Historic Preservation and for a grant to do maintenance on, um, Montgomery Place. Uh, they are making the same application this year. They scored high last year, not quite high enough to get funded. They would like another resolution and support.
We did this once already, but you gotta do it again?
You did it last year, yeah. This is a new year, a new, uh, letter of support. Um, Bard would like us to know that, um, visitor ship to Montgomery Place is up.
Is it the same, uh, project a year ago?
And the project is...
Farmhouse and Mansion Restoration?
He, it's quite, um, similar. It's a little bit more expanded. They found more work that needs to be done on the mansion. And I sent you, uh, that list of the work that needed to be done electronically. And this is just a letter of support of the application. There's no financial obligation on the part of the township. It's just recognizing the importance of Montgomery Place to our town.
I'll move that.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for this resolution?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, item number five is, um, the beginning process of the complete streets, okay? So we received a grant from the Greenway on complete, uh, uh, streets. A memo of understanding was issued. Ted Fink said, I'll begin the process and give you, um, some templates to work from. And can I get your feedback? And so he submitted this. He and I had a conversation.
Who's he?
Ted Fink. I'm sorry, I thought I said that.
You did.
Ted Fink, and he and I had a conversation. This is like sort of the preamble to what, um, will come out of the Complete Streets Initiative. He just gathered some introductory, pulled from all the documents we have. He gave us, um, a template for a, uh, resolution um, that he pulled from American Planning Association. He said, the county, and so on and so forth. And he would like our input. Um, he and I discussed that maybe it's a little premature to have, um, a resolution. Um, and a pol- a resolution about a policy statement, that it might make more sense to constitute the committee first and have them, you know, maybe use this as a, a starting point, but certainly, um, take a look at, um, drafting a Red Hooks version of a policy statement. And so tonight, we don't need to take any action whatsoever, except, um, do, uh, do think about, um, how you would like to see it. He's gonna give us a list of suggested next steps, which will be available for us at the next meeting. So if you would consider how you would like to maybe see it, uh, once you get that list, um, turn around.
Which list?
The list that you don't have, that Ted Fink is going to draft for us, Harry. I'm sorry. I should face your way, not the other way. Um, Ted thinks that he's going to develop for us a suggested list of next steps on the Complete Streets.
Yeah.
And so what I'm asking you is to take a look at that when that comes. Um, and think about how you would like, uh, the order, how you would like to do things. Should we constitute an advisory committee, Complete Streets Advisory Committee, with our highway superintendent, people from the trails perhaps, um, other committees to, uh, work on this project with our consultant? And, um, come up with, um, some recommendations. And that to include, um, Red Hooks' version of a, a resolution, a policy statement, and next steps list, and...
So this, this is a, a preliminary...
It is always...
Preliminary outline of, of the streets, I'm gonna call it an outline, I guess.
I would call it like an intro. It's an intro. The outline of what's next, like you see on the last page, it like, just goes town roadway specification. So obviously, that's one of the many steps that need to be, um, uh, conducted as part of developing a Complete Streets program. You'll look at trails, you'll look inside.
But this, this is some, this is something that needs to be embraced first before we move forward.
Well, I know, I know. I mean, you could do it that way, but...
Well, well, we have, I mean, this, this looks like it, like it's spelling an awful lot out based on why. I don't know.
Right, well, I think he was pulling from what the county's done, what other municipalities have done, what the American Planning Association recommends. I think he was just compiling stuff for us to use as a starting point.
Okay, no, I understand, but it's, we as a town, I would have to, would have to embrace this as the basis for, basis for whatever, for the work we do.
Right, and we wanna take a look at...
Or, or revise this.
Well, right, I think that's my point, is revise it. I know our highway super has some comments, our attorney has some comments.
I, I do have some comments, and if there's room for discussion, I would like to bring that forward tonight. Because there was one section in this resolution that really bothered me.
Well, again...
Again, it is just a discussion, but I would like to voice my concern about this particular part of the resolution. And I would like to know where in other municipalities this resolution appears with this kind of language. On page fifteen, it says, be it further resolved that if the highway department determines that inclusion of pedestrian and/or bicycle facilities are unable to be accommodated on a town road proposed for construction, improvement, or maintenance, the highway superintendent shall provide said determination in writing with supporting documentation to the town board for their review and approval. And I don't think that the town board fully understands, or that Ted Fink fully understands, what this would do to my department.
Well, that's exactly why we wanna get input, and again...
And that's why I wanna express my opinion fully.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I think you'd have to be part, part of the, of the group discussing this.
Well, absolutely.
This has, this has to be...
But the town board needs to be aware of what my concerns are right off the bat.
Well, well, if, if we have a committee, and you're, you're part of that committee, that, that would be, your, your input would be paramount to, to, to...
My understanding was that this draft resolution was going to be adopted prior to forming a committee, and that this language would be in there as, as an adoption of the policy itself, going forward and then creating the committee. That's what this appeared to be to me.
Wow.
And I just wanna say that this directive...
I think a great, a committee comes first.
Okay, now you're saying that, but that's not what it appeared in this draft.
I didn't know about it before.
So what this statement says is that I have to incur engineering costs for every road project, every maintenance project, every construction project that I wanna do on the roads to either show that we are able to put pedestrian or bicycle accommodations or facilities. And those engineering costs are huge. Or I have to incur engineering costs to provide supporting document, documentation to the town board, proving that we can't do it. And I have a real issue with that language. And I have a real issue with not being included when this grant was accepted.
This, Theresa, this process hasn't started yet.
It did start. It started with this study. It started with Ted Fink and Green Plan creating this study that affects the highway department and the highway specifications. And I had asked you to be included in at least some of the conversations about this, and I was not. Now, I understand that you're going to create this...
There have been no conversations about this.
And that's the problem.
There, this doesn't, there is no study. This is the beginning process...
This is written with a grant.
This is written with a grant. He compiled things. He suggested as a template, a template. And he pulled from other communities and said, here's how you might have an introduction to a Complete Streets report. And he'll give us a list of suggested steps. It's only a template to work from. There is nothing here, that section that you referred to, I inquired about that, 'cause I got your comment, was, uh, he, he says it was pulled from the American Planning Association. All he was doing was trying to give us a template to work from. And it's got, nobody's input on this, except for what he pulled together for us to try to assist us. And he recommends putting together a committee and reviewing, um, and developing a policy statement. And that's a sample, and that's a sample...
Then you, you can't include a proposed resolution when he does a template, because that gives a sense that you're ready to resolve something.
Again?
Or not.
You know, I didn't anticipate any of this, and we had a conversation. And I said, "Oh, I think it's a little premature to have a..." He said, "No, I just pulled that stuff so you'd have a template to work from."
Well, it gives us something that completely pull apart and edit a screen of what we want.
Exactly. Exactly. So all input from everyone. And then let's figure out who we'd like to have on that advisory committee in addition to our Highway Superintendent, people from trails. Probably we'd wanna have a rec person, you know? Whatever you all think would be a good balance and contribution for that committee. Okay. So any more on that? That's a discussion?
You remember a few years ago, you talked about taking the existing volume that you have that talks about highway specifications-
Yes.
The state, it was adopted by the Town of Redhook years ago and was never really changed much.
Was never updated, and that should be part of this.
Never updated.
It is, it is.
And we talked, we talked about wanting to address that, to update it, bring it up to date, stuff like that. Is that being, is that part of it?
That's a, yes, absolutely.
Where is that?
Well, Bill, that's what I'm saying. This is like the intro. You start with, "Here's what, here's what the town has already done." This is the way he's laid it out. Here's what the town's already done. Here's what you might consider as a policy statement. And you see, he's gonna give us a list of all the things we need to do.
Did he, did he get a copy of that document? Does he own it?
That was a Cornell document, and we discussed it, it's something-
I was going to, because I wasn't, I wasn't involved with this, this preliminary outline. And I think that-
Nobody was involved.
I might have a better understanding of this preliminary outline if I had been included with the process. Because it speaks directly to the Highway Department and changing the highway specifications. And I was under the impression that Ted Fink was going to reach out to the Highway Superintendent under your direction.
Absolutely.
And that did not happen, which is why I was shocked when I saw this and felt that-
Teresa, this is only the beginning.
Well, it's, it's, looks like a resolution, and-
All right, make sure you understand, we wanted to change the whole volume and applies it to the highway specs.
Absolutely.
Not just some fancy language pickpocket sort of-
I, I asked about the question. The, the reference has to do with just having something in the file, so when you go back to a road, you know why you chose not to put a sidewalk wire to put a trails or whatever. There's just documentation in the file.
That documentation is translated into engineering. It's, it's, that's how I see it.
I don't, I think you're reading a lot into that.
In order to understand if you can add things to roads, you have to study, for instance, Echo Valley Road. When you wanted to study, if you could narrow it from twenty-six feet to twenty-two feet, you had to get an engineer involved. So once you got the engineer involved, it was seventy-five hundred dollars for the study. Then it was twenty thousand dollars for the design plans. And then it was fifteen thousand dollars added to the cost of the road. So I'm looking at it from that perspective, because that's what it says to me. You have to tell me, if you can't do these things to this road, why not? And, and, and I find that to be very, a very expensive proposal.
Well, I think you're reading a lot into it, but that's the kind of feedback we would wanna get when you're a part of this Complete Streets Advisory Committee. The process is only now starting. You didn't miss anything. Nobody here, myself included, has participated in this process. It's the beginning. Okay. Number six is a resolution authorizing letting up the bid's website development. So we've had Sarah's been kind enough-
Communications Committee.
As the liaison to the Communications Committee. They've worked on RFP.
You can speak to the committee. We have nothing in writing from the committee, but you can speak to-
I just, I gave you something in writing last time.
Sarah. Sarah. All right. So-
This is what the right move getting, the report from the committee from last meeting.
Folks, what would you like to do about this RFP? Have you had a chance to review it? Are you comfortable with it?
Well, we're just gonna, this is just a proposal. This is a, an, an RFP to go forward with proposals for, for designing the new website.
Yeah, we've been over this.
That's correct. And this is the last-
For an update, just to the energy, I think, right?
This is the last meeting before what was hoped for as the day to go out with this RFP. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to do it, but it'd be nice to accommodate that. It's got some dates in here.
Yeah, we, we're looking at issuing it on July twenty-first and having them submit by August twenty-first with some time in there to answer any questions they have and then make some, you know, review what gets sent in in the fall. And there's no exact deadline on when we would make a decision, but the good thing in my view is that it's right around the time that we'll start to set the budget for next year. So we'll have time to consider the price tag and include it in next year's budget. And we could set up a timeline for the work based on, you know, how we think the money ought to be allocated.
So Ted, Ted knows what you, what, what, what this proposal request is?
Yeah, so Ted Cudsey has reviewed this.
And it's, and it's all, he's, he's ready to go out for, for the RFP for?
Yeah, so the purchasing agent Ted Cudsey has reviewed this RFP. He's gonna do one final review of it, but he thinks that it's the right format and feels comfortable with everything we've listed out here. And the committee has gone over it several times. We've really tried to keep it, tried to find a happy medium between being specific about the things we really feel need to be included in the website and being simple in what we request so that we can really see what different vendors will propose to us. So we can, you know, make a decision on who would deliver something we can, we can look with.
The, the only comment I have is just a, a minor technical one, which is when we go out to bid for this, I noticed it lists background. The Town of Redhook is located in Dutchess County, population of approximately, and who knows if it's eleven thousand three hundred, but it's thereabouts. If that includes the two villages who have their own separate website, that figure, I think my only concern is that sometimes the vendors price according to the population. So I don't know if you wanna just use the population of the township or the township including the villages, since they are separate.
Okay.
We might save money.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I would say. Otherwise, I think it's great. We have some things that we, we feel strongly about, which is that interactive nature, the ability to let folks know when something they're interested about is happening. We can do alerts, we can text and email as part of the description and the service that we're looking for. And it's all part of hopefully an initiative to make government a little more accessible and effective. So I would certainly support going out with this. Harry?
So move.
Okay.
Do you? Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
How does it go, Harry?
Harry?
Did it go good?
I think I already did.
All right. Jim?
Yes, I have no problem with it.
Okay. All right. Sarah, would you like to move, since you've worked on it?
Sure. So I'll move this resolution.
Oh, Bill moves, oh.
Bill, I'll second it, I'll second it.
It's all right, I'll, I'll give it up to Sarah.
Well, Harry seconded it.
Here you second it.
I heard him move.
I'll just read it, she'll like-
We can't even agree on who gets to-
This resolution is well documented, it's well explained, it's well thought out.
Is it number forty?
Okay.
No brainer.
Resolution number thirty.
Resolution number forty?
Forty, okay.
Okay, authorizing Town of Redhook to authorize issuance of a request proposal for website design and development, which is already been moved by Bill and seconded by Harry. Whereas we've determined it's necessary and in the best interest of the town to request these proposals for an update to our website to enhance the user experience, simplify content management, and provide better information and customer service to the community. And whereas the Communications Committee, in cooperation with the purchasing agent, has prepared the proposed RFP on file with the Town Board, not therefore be it resolved that we authorize the issuance of this RFP.
So Sarah, could I, could I ask you to entertain that notion of changing the population statistics?
Yeah.
And save some money?
Why do you wanna change that though? Because I think we should be accurate, because that is the population of our township, which includes the villages.
Well, the website, yes, you're absolutely right, Jim.
The website covers everyone.
Website would, it does.
Sometimes the website, sometimes the companies will say, you know, like for every five thousand residents, they're gonna bill you a certain amount. So I think that's why Robert was thinking-
This is gonna put us in a different tier.
But I don't, I mean, I, it's hard to say, you know, because some, some vendors won't do that. And I, I hear what you're saying, Jim, because even village residents are gonna use the town website.
Well, then, then-
Anybody?
I wouldn't change that number if you wanna strike the population and, and let the vendors that wanna give us the bid, you know, look up our town population or something.
I mean, that's the thing is they're gonna-
Yeah, look it up anyway.
But we should be accurate.
They're gonna look it up no matter what, right? If, if they care about that. And this is what the most recent census number is. So that's, that's what I put in for the Town of Redhook.
You put the town as, as, includes two villages, Redhook and Tibley, and leave the population thing out then or something, but I, I don't know.
Well, I just throw it out there, I'll let you all decide. I'm, you know, I'm always looking to leave a few dollars.
I know, it just seemed if we, if we go and try and figure out the population of town exclusively, we just think, which includes two villages.
Actually, it's not- It's not, it's not hard. We're running with the estimates of thirty-one hundred for the population of the two villages.
What, what part of the budget is it on? Is it on town outside or town, all townwide budget? Does that matter?
Uh, the website.
It's on, it's in the eight, it's paid for in, in the eighth line.
Well, then it should be the full population, maybe.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with changing it, but I think Jim's right that people, the vendors that care about that are gonna go out and look for that number anyway, but-
Well, when you look up, the interesting thing is when you look up the town population, you get the town numbers. You don't get the town with the villages number a lot of times.
So I don't, I don't know.
Well, then, fine.
Sometimes you might, it depends if you do Wikipedia or you get different things.
Well, I, I went on census dot com.
I looked on the census, the federal census.
Oh, and census is, gives you the full? Okay, whatever, whatever you decide, whatever you decide, I'm comfortable with.
It's actually eleven thousand three hundred nineteen as of the latest census.
Wow.
You wanna get technical?
Does that include Eleanor? I don't know.
Well, then, she wasn't here in two thousand ten, so you're right.
Burnett White's been busy too, so, you know. Okay.
Not County Board College.
Yeah, right.
No, that has to be County College.
All right.
They have a formula to that.
Okay, so I'm gonna take back my suggested change, so we can get out with another.
Okay.
That's okay.
All right.
So you made the motion. Who seconded it?
Harry seconded it.
Harry, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you, Sarah, for good work on this. And the Communications Committee. Please communicate to them that we're grateful. Number seven, so we have a discussion, Teresa, on plow truck-
Sure.
For tonight, and you have some things you wanted to run by us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to inform the supervisor and the Town Board that the Highway Department is in need of a six-wheel plow slash dump truck for the coming winter season. In nineteen ninety-seven, the town purchased two international six-wheel plow dump trucks. They were due for inspection in two thousand seventeen, and both failed due to corroded, cracked frames. The frames had been DOT welded in the past, but are now so damaged that the trucks can't be used on the road. Truck twenty-one is a chassis with a dump body, plow, and wing with seventy-eight thousand miles. It was used for a ten-mile plow route last winter and as a dump truck in the construction season from spring until fall. Truck twenty-two is a chassis with a plow and wing with eighty thousand miles. It was used as a spare truck in case one of our other trucks broke down. Current value of the trucks is hard to determine, as they could only be used on private property or purchased for parts. We recommend that they be declared surplus and sold on an approved municipal auction website as soon as possible. We don't need them sitting on the lot. We can't do anything with them ourselves. They're, they're not of any use to the municipality anymore. I have attached a specification sheet with a rough estimate for a new six-wheel truck chassis with a dump body, plow, and wing, and a computerized stainless steel sander. I have also attached a sample of the current leasing financing options offered by the company. I know we usually go out to bond, or sometimes, you know, we use funds on hand, but this is another option for you to look at. I will leave the financing decision up to the town, and the truck can be purchased by using an existing county contract that meets our purchasing guidelines. I have sent a copy to Ted Cudsey, and I've discussed this with Harry Cogan, the Highway Department liaison. This truck was due to be purchased in two thousand eighteen according to our capital equipment replacement plan. The estimated cost of the new truck is two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. If we wait until January to place the order, the truck will not be here for the winter. We will need to extend each plow route by two miles, which will result in a reduced level of service. I'm hoping we can find a way to order the truck and ready to be, in order to be ready for the coming snow season. Thank you for your consideration. I know that if it's not possible, we'll just do whatever we can. This truck is a six-wheel dump truck. The last truck we bought was a ten-wheeler. This truck is actually a little more expensive due to the fact that this has an automatic transmission. And it also, the price increases yearly, so-
So you're gonna lose two trucks, and you're gonna replace even more?
Well, that's the best we can do right now.
One was a spare, yeah.
One was a spare, so-
So what I've done so far is I've talked to Anne, so we, we're gonna reach out to you tomorrow and have a meeting and see what we can do from a budgetary standpoint. So see what the implications of that are, since this is a, you know, significant expenditure. And then, you know, we've started already having conversations with our attorney about leasing versus purchasing and all that stuff. So, you know, I think we can certainly move this ball, you know, the, the information gathering, the information. Can you give us some idea how long it will take, once, once it is ordered? If it's ordered, how long it's to construct the thing?
Um, I can't off the top of my head. I can't remember. I know that sometimes, the minimum is a hundred and twenty days.
Okay.
But we have waited as long as eight or nine months. And I know Reinbeck waited over a year for a truck that they had built.
Okay. Now, this is another Western Star, at least.
We really thought that the Western Star with the Henderson body that we got last year was a wonderful truck and a great investment over what we had purchased previously on a good note. This will almost finish the replacement of all the older trucks. We have one truck that will need replacing in two years on the plow routes. So we will have replaced everything.
Just in time to start again.
Just, well-
No, we're, we're not. I mean, that's largely the problem, is it wasn't staggered, right? So there's nothing coming off of-
Right, and, and-
I'm aware.
The trucks usually have, they say, a fifteen-year life.
Yeah.
You know, there are towns, like the Town of Casanova, they have a program in place where they have been able to finance plow trucks every five years. They buy them new, they sell them before their value is diminished. They get a pickup truck every two years, they get a loader every two years. They buy them on state contract. They manage to sell them without losing more than a thousand dollars a year, which you would put into maintenance. But they had to bite the bullet and finance this rollover program to begin with. So they eliminate all the maintenance costs, all the headaches of trucks breaking down. They're still mostly under warranty. And, and by doing that, you're, you're always getting the latest and greatest technology. So the gentleman's name is Tim Hunt, and he's going to come here. I've asked him to come to a Town Board meeting in, in August or September to explain the, the pavement preservation program, because Sarah, you had asked how that would work and what we are really looking at in our community. So he may be able to give you a little information if you want it at that point in time. He explains this in, in Cornell workshops and to other towns to, just as a different way of looking at your equipment replacement. Instead of run it into the ground and incur all the cost of aging equipment, to always have something that's usable, and then turn around, get rid of it, and replace it with something new. So that's, that's another option, but that's a long-range plan, so.
Reminds me of my grandfather, he used to buy a car and keep it for three years and get a new one after three years, and so. Okay, so we'll, we'll work together, you, me, Anne, and try and, you know, we're meeting on the budget now. I'm working on the budget right now. So let's see what we can figure out between now and our next meeting, which is the twenty-sixth. You know, I, I don't wanna characterize the, the lease term, but my understanding is there's a lot of steps that you have to go through. is there's a lot of steps that you have to go through, including paying for your financial advisor to tell you that that's the best way to proceed, and you have to supply that to the controller, and you have to pay your financial advisor that the interest rates that are quoted here are actually above what we could borrow.
No, and that's, you know, I, I don't have the knowledge of all that, that backstory, so it's just something that the company offers that it included in the quote.
Yeah.
Just for information, not for a suggestion of a way to go.
Right, right.
We should order them in time to have them before December.
Do, do you think you could try to find out, uh, I'm sorry, that's why I had asked about the Western Star, 'cause I recall that they were pretty good about turning that truck around.
Yes.
Right. So, if you could see if you can get any information.
I can find out, I can put a call in, in tomorrow and see what their, um, expected delivery time is.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, that's item number seven. I don't have any, uh, correspondence, um, to share with you all. I just failed at the beginning on announcements. I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, thank everybody in the town, and folks who don't even live in the town, for your patience as we continue with the sidewalk project. This was a project that was authorized, um, applied for the grant, um, mostly federally funded three years ago. That's how long it takes from grant time to, uh, implementation. And we know that, um, there are moments where they're pouring concrete or they're putting the curbing down, where they have to, uh, uh, turn Route Nine into a single lane, and, you know, it, it doesn't last more than half hour, hour max. Um, it's a few moments delay, but we do appreciate your patience. Um, we hope that you'll notice, especially if you're out there right now on that side of Route Nine, just the, the existing conditions are so bad here on the, uh, eastern portion of Route Nine, and that hopefully you'll feel when it's all done with the landscaping, new landscaping as well, that it's an asset to the community. But we do thank you for your patience in the meantime. And, um, that's about it, um, at this time, public, more public comment? Thank you, Linda.
Yeah, uh, and considering your website, uh, you mentioned accessibility, uh, you should be concerned about increasing the size of the font and provide audio. I'd like to know the status of Saint Margaret's. Harry is supposed to get a committee together, has that been done? Uh, where are we with that?
Oh, we don't have a committee yet, and we have, uh, and, uh, I think as much as anything else, at this point, we need a committee for funding rather than anybody, any committee to do it, to try and do anything with the property. We're, we're maintaining it in a one shape.
Have you had any people showing any interest in doing this?
No, not yet.
People? We need volunteers, so get in touch with Harry.
We need to move forward with a lot of construction and, and funding for construction and make the thing more usable than it's been.
Okay. Um, and the status of the Challenger Field, how are we doing on that?
Um, yes, they are, uh, the formal announcement of that grant is actually happening this, uh, week or next week. Um, so yes, we've received the two hundred thousand dollar grant that we applied for. So, um, what we now need to do is, um, go out, uh, to bid for the engineers to revise the initial plan work that was done, um, back in two thousand nine, I believe, for that property, because there were two substantive changes, one of which is the Challenger Field, and the second of which is we acquired, um, the lot adjacent to it, so now we can do a sane and safe and rational parking, uh, area. So, we'll need to modify that plan.
And will the people involved with these individuals be trained on how to handle persons with disabilities?
Uh, the Challenger Field, um, the reason it's called Challenger is because there's actually a league called the Challenger League, and so they travel around and they use the, the field, for example, in Wapinjers. And so, yes, there's actually folks there, um, involved with the league, um, and the, uh, participants in the league that, you know, ostensibly know exactly what they're doing, yeah.
And you might be considering some sort of training in the future for your staff about how to handle people with disabilities, because it's not always handled correctly.
Yeah, we're, we're, um, already starting to learn about, you know, what it means to construct facilities that are conducive, um, to, uh, individuals, you know, what, what the construction can look like, the materials and so on and so forth. So, yes, obviously, we'll need to figure out a whole bunch of things, um, but we, we hope to gear the, the facility so it can be used entirely, all of the facility by those individuals if possible.
And I personally have a, an issue with the trails going through that may not be accessible to those in wheelchairs, and that should be considered.
Okay.
And if anybody needs help on this issue, on the ADA.
Right.
Just give me a call.
Okay, thank you, Linda. And yes, we'll be reaching out to people who live around the, the, uh, annex lands as well to get their input. We want to assure them that we're, um, sensitive to the fact that this project, as it, um, begins construction, um, we want it to have, um, you know, limited impact upon, uh, those who live over in that Aspen Wall area, at least that section of Aspen Wall. Um, we will be sensitive to that.
And I'm just saying that the, the web RFP does specifically ask for companies to explain how they will make the site handicapped accessible, and that it should meet, there's like guidelines that are put out, I think, I don't know if they're federal or international, but.
Federal, yeah.
Yeah, federal, I think, um, so it lists that they need to meet those or exceed them, so we'll see what they come up with, but.
Hearing no more public comment at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss the hiring of a particular individual, an attorney-client session as well. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you all very much. Thank you all for staying with us tonight and participating in our local government.
So, how come our president, uh, Dr. Stone, can't come?